To call the December 7th Planning Commission meeting in order. Could you please join me for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I please have a roll call?
Commissioner Silverman.
Present.
Commissioner Marsters.
Present.
Commissioner Harper-Peterson is absent this evening, as she indicated during the last planning commission hearing. Vice Chair Bergman.
Present.
And Chair Gutierrez.
Present.
Public comment. Public comment is limited to items not on the agenda. The commission may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed as allowed under the Brown Act. However, the commission's general policy is to refer items to staff for attention or have a matter placed on a future commission agenda for a comprehensive action or report. Is there anyone here to speak on items, anything that's not on the agenda? Okay, moving along then. Approval of minutes, November 16th, 2015. Any changes? I didn't have any.
Move approval of the November 16th, 2015 planning commission minutes.
A second.
I'm sorry, I was a little slow on the uptake. On the minutes, it indicates that I both approved them and was absent. I believe that there probably is a third person other than me. I'm guessing it was Angela. So if you would accept a friendly amendment that Silverman, under 5A, be changed to Harper-Peterson.
5A. Oh, you were absent, but you arrived at 7:13. Motion passed 3-0. Oh.
So it was Angela?
I would have voted yes had I been here, but I wasn't.
Okay, can I have a roll call vote?
So, the bottom line is, the way it's supposed to work, and this land has recently seen some misuse, so project that back 100 years of what they might discover in addition to what they already know, and that's part of the understanding with the water boards. If they come up with other contaminants, then they have to address those too. And after the closure, so what they need to do, and I'll just totally exaggerate, they take the Indian burial ground, and they take, put a pile there. They take the chlorinated hydrocarbon contaminated soil, they put it there, I mean, they'll find a pot of gold, they'll put it over there. They're supposed to profile each of those piles and determine where those contaminated or other types of soils can be hauled away and taken to, and that has, that is a contract between the developer and the water boards to do that. So, I'm concerned that issuing a haul, I don't mind about the grading, but issuing them a haul permit might give them a false idea that they can go ahead and just move it at will, and that could get them really in deep trouble with the DTSC, because you're not supposed to be transporting hazardous waste without a profile.
Did you happen to see the letter of April 30th, 2015, from the water board? In regards to, pretty much, I think, everything, most of everything you're referring to, because there's certain things that have to, have to be done in order for that to be satisfied.
3/30/15, yeah, I did look at that. And when they issue the closure report, the public has 30 days to comment, and on the very inside, I did, I looked at it, and they had only done half the job. So, if I hadn't stepped in and said, whoa, wait, you, commenting to the water boards, they didn't clean up this full site, this is a hospital. They had twice as much material that they had to haul away. So, this is going to be our only opportunity to remove any dangerous materials from this site. So, I urge you to use caution, and, and that the contractor know upfront that it's in everybody's best interest to take care of the hazardous material first, and then bring in all the soil, do whatever you want, and then everything will go a lot smoother.
So, as part of that letter, one of the dates that I noticed is that they're required to complete a vapor mitigation design no later than August of 2015, and has that been done? Do we know?
Good evening, Planning Commission. I'm Peter Krasnow from West Environmental. Been involved with the environmental investigations on this property beginning in 2009, have been working with the water board, the county regulatory agencies since the beginning of this project. To answer the question with regard to the vapor mitigation design, that was based upon a previous schedule. The regulators have been advised, and there's been an extension granted for this submission of the vapor design. So, that is something, that's also up on the water board's website, there's communication documenting all of the back and forth in terms of the approval process. So, if that answers that question.
Yes, it does. Now, let's see if you can answer Paul's question.
I would be glad to answer Paul's question. What Paul's identified hits a number of the steps that are involved in the project. So, we have done an extensive amount of sampling already. That sampling data is being forwarded to landfills for what's called pre-acceptance. So, before we start excavating, Paul is correct, we want to know where that soil is going to go. So, that is the plan. So, this data right now is being submitted because landfill criteria change over time. So, before excavation begins, we will have an acceptance location. The contractor that will work on this stage of the project will have a hazardous certificate, they're trained, licensed by the state, to deal with hazardous materials. Let me emphasize, the only contamination that we're addressing are residual petroleum hydrocarbons. The site's been investigated for volatile organic compounds, chlorinated compounds, heavy metals, none of those conditions are what are driving the cleanup requirements. These are basically oily soils, stained soils. They're not being driven by health risk, they're being driven by what's called nuisance condition, people just don't like dirty soil. We will be beginning that work, overseeing that work with the regulatory agencies. We will be soil sampling, air monitoring during that work. Before excavation begins, the landfills will have already accepted the soil, it will be direct loaded into trucks to be hauled to the landfills. When the excavation is done, we will collect samples documenting that the soil has been removed to meet the regulatory criteria, and then it will be backfilled, and then the construction project can begin. So, that's the plan on how we will implement this stage of the project.
And you will have that completion certificate in hand that Paul is talking about?
I'm not sure exactly which completion certificate. At the end of all of this, we will submit documentation to the Regional Water Quality Control Board. There will be a no further action letter that comes from the regulators, but let me emphasize, most of the work that we're doing are on sites that are already closed by the regulators. There's no, the actions that are being done here are what I would put into the category of basically voluntary to address nuisance conditions. There's no health risk driver on this environmental that we're dealing with, other than this vapor barrier, which once again is very much a prophylactic stage, just to make sure that there aren't future issues with potential vapor issues. A few of the buildings are getting these vapor barriers underneath them. And I'll answer one other question from Paul with regard to the DTSC and why they're not involved. Back in 2009, we went through what's called the MOA process, memorandum of agreement, between the Regional Water Board and the Department of Toxic Substance Control, DTSC. The site was enrolled, each of the agencies looked at the site, the two agencies decided which site, which agency should have oversight, given the history, and this one being mostly old gas stations, because there are a number of them out there. The water board was the selected agency, and they have the authority over the site. So, I don't know if there are any other pending questions from Paul, but I'm glad to answer those.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Being that I live downhill, I'll reserve my right to review the closure report and make comments.
I should write?
Thank you, Paul. Are there any other? No. You weren't raising your hand, is that what you're saying? Okay. Can I get, you want to close?
So, you want to start talking about the project?
Yeah, do you want to close public hearing?
I'd be happy to close public hearing. I move that we close the public hearing.
Second. Can I have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Marsters.
Yes.
Commissioner Silverman.
Yep.
Commissioner Bergman, Vice Chair Bergman.
Yes.
And Chair Gutierrez.
Yes. All right, Scott, do you want to start it?
Yeah, I'm going to break this up into two pieces. The first piece is the sign, the sign piece of it, and I'll get to the grading in a little So, there were a couple of places where they talked about illuminated signs. And it also says they want to allow the signs to be internally illuminated, which would not otherwise be permitted. So, I'm, I'm going to ask the question, what other residential projects in San Carlos have illuminated signs?
I'm not aware of any at this, you know, I'd have to do some research, but I can't none come to mind.
Okay. So, I begin to have a problem with the illuminated signs.
Internally illuminated, or just illuminated? I don't know, because like, we have a sign up on top of the hill, but it's not, it illuminates a sign, but it's not internally illuminated.
That's the difference, I think. And the other sort of issue that I have with the signs here is the fact that they're going to put, or potentially put one of these signs, starting at 10 feet and going 25 feet high for a residential project, and I don't know of any residential projects that have sort of these big announcement signs similar to that one. So, I have less of a problem with the monument sign, which is 10 feet. I do have a problem with big giant signs going up and down El Camino. I know there are some that are lit, but in, in most cases, those are historic signs. So, that's sort of just my thinking about the signs, and I'm kind of wondering how other commissioners feel about that.
I mean, I'm not going to speak to it in the abstract. I mean, I will say that neither of the signs proposed are adjacent to residential. I mean, they're on El Camino, which is fairly well-lit. I think that they could look actually good and contribute to El Camino, I mean, if done well, and based on the cost of this project, I assume it's going to be done well. So, I don't, I don't really have an issue with, with the illuminated signs, as my prior comment noted, I mean, I don't, leasing signs, I think, would have a greater tendency to be a little tacky, and I also don't see any reason why they would need to be lit, other than during business hours, if at all.
Then why would you need a lit sign for the project, except, I'm just trying to understand the reasoning here.
Yeah, no, I mean, so during the night, I mean, people are driving, it's dark, and they want to see the building, so they're going to illuminate it. It's either going to be illuminated by the sign itself, or it's going to be, have exterior illumination, and I don't really see, you know, a significant difference, other than allowing them to have them internally illuminated, might allow them to make them more attractive.
What about if it were only, if it were a monument sign, rather than 10 to 25 feet, which, though it may not be seen by residents on the east side, it will certainly be seen by residents who live on the west side.
So, where did you get 25? I thought these were 10 feet tall.
One of them starts at 10 feet and goes 25, goes up to 25 feet tall.
Page he's looking at?
I think he's talking about D2, and I think it's, I think it's the 25 feet is from the ground to the top of the sign.
Yeah, so it's a 15-foot-tall sign, but it starts 10 feet off the ground. So, I don't have a problem with the monument sign, as much as I have a problem with the D1 sign, which, you know, is...
I still don't think anyone's going to be able to see them from any residential area. I mean, I just don't see how.
Residential sitting up on top of that hill overlooking, from the west side, overlooking that.
Wow, okay. I mean, I can't, I can't deny that there are hills in San Carlos, and they might be able to see the sign from the hill.
Yeah.
That is possible, I suppose.
If I could, through the chair, just, just a couple of things. The building-mounted sign is 10 feet, top to bottom, but it needs to be mounted above, you know, above the first floor, so, but it's still only 10 feet, and I want...
About 15 feet, right? It's a overtake, depending on where the signs are located.
And I wanted to say, one of the reasons that we are, that staff is recommending the internal illumination is, you're correct, they're not typically, in residential areas, they're not typically internally illuminated, but you often see a wall or a building, and then it has lighting, particularly at night, that illuminates the sign. And because of the nature of the hardscape and the site, it would be hard to do that effectively for, for these sites. So, if you think about some of the other, other residential buildings, they often have a wall or a ground monument that is also lit at night.
But you're putting this on one of the four buildings?
That's correct.
Okay, so, I'm just trying to understand the thinking here, there's not going to be four signs on the four buildings, and this isn't going to say Building 3 on it, or something like that. It's just going to say whatever the name of it is called.
Right.
And it just seems to me that...
Other apartment complexes will have a sign, often on a, on a monument wall, that will then be lit, they'll have spotlights on it at night. So, it's not like we don't have, that we don't have lighting on multifamily projects in terms, in terms of their signs, that they're visible at night. So, but it's hard to do that here because of the nature of, of the site. So, I'm just, I'm just explaining why we were supporting the internal illumination.
Yeah, my, the issue I have with this is that if we do it here, and we internally illuminate it, we're going to start having internally illuminated requests for signs for every project that comes along, they're going to say, well, you did it here, why...
We don't have to do it everywhere, and for me, like I said, I think the fact that it's on El Camino, not impacted by residential, I mean, it seems appropriate for the location.
Okay.
I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't have a problem saying no if it were in a different location.
This is sort of a replay, I know, I feel like I'm on the other side of the fence than I was at the last meeting, when you were saying that, you know, you motioned no, you should vote no, because you didn't, we didn't really understand the criteria for the sign program, and I feel like this has even less information on it, as far as what the sign program is, and what the criteria was to decide that it would fit the sign program. And I feel like, I mean, I'm not like opposed to signs per se, but I feel like we're left a little bit short of information as to how to make an appropriate decision, rather...
I mean, for me, you know, there was a, the difference for me between last time and this time is last time we had a very specific limit, and the, the proposal was actually more than one and a half times the limit that we had. I mean, I noticed this time, these signs are also like 10 square feet or something over the limit, but it was, it's proportionally, didn't, didn't strike me as terribly significant. And again, like, for me, I don't really see the difference between allowing internal illumination and then having a spotlight on it. I mean, frankly, I think the spotlight is going to have more light pollution than the internal illumination will, and so, it just, I mean, to me, I see, I agree with you, because you're agreeing with me, but I just don't see the, I just don't see the differentiation here as being particularly impactful, which is why I'm not struggling with it. If I did, if I thought that this was like a significant deviation with what was permitted, I would be struggling as well.
Are internally illuminated signs permitted?
Let me verify that.
Because, because...
In the sign ordinance, but we, they are, they are permitted.
I was going to say, it's at the very end of the sign.
Yeah, yeah, give me a second, and we'll circle back.
So, the other question about the, the D1 or the D2 choice in the signs, do you have issues with moving towards deciding the monument sign, rather than the sign attached to the...
See, I wasn't going to, I wasn't going to go there, but if I did, I'd prefer the building sign to the monument sign, personally.
D2, which is one that you're not comfortable with.
But I mean, I wasn't going to, I wasn't going to choose that for them, I was going to leave that to them, but I was just trying to, and again, this is, this is coming from the guy who's admittedly not the most aesthetic, probably the least aesthetic of the planning commission, but I'm just like trying to envision a big old monument in, on the middle of the sidewalk on El Camino.
It's not going to be on the sidewalk.
I know it's not going to be on the sidewalk, I recognize that, but...
I'm envisioning the same, driving down and seeing this big old thing, or having somebody now seeing that out their, their window.
That's why businesses generally get to choose their own signage, they don't have us to, you know, dictate it to them, and they can make, you know, good and balanced decisions that are most aesthetically pleasing.
I don't feel strongly either way, to be honest with you, D1 and D2, I think they're, they're both reasonable requests, given the scale of the development.
I don't think they're unreasonable. I just, I guess what I would like to see in the future is what you alluded to at the last meeting, is like, if we're on these sign programs, it would be nice to know what the criteria is for making decisions that are outside normal signage, and maybe you already, you have all that in there, but I didn't accept it.
Hang on, just a second. Except that D2 actually is within the guidelines, and D1 is acting, asking for an exception.
And through the chair, I can answer Commissioner Marsters' questions about whether the illuminated signs are permitted. Where they're, where they wouldn't be permitted are within residentially zoned neighborhoods. So, this is a mixed-use corridor, so in this particular scenario, they would be permitted.
And on the page four, where it says analysis, it does provide you information. The signs are allowed to be 20 square feet, but you're only allowed one per multifamily project. This project, which consists of six buildings, is a little different scale. If you just had one of the buildings, it would be entitled to a 20-square-foot sign. So, two of them, and the largest of the two signs they're proposing is 16 points, 16.7 square feet.
Okay. Thanks.
So, kind of moving along, Shannon, do you, are you...
You know, I'm, there's nothing here that would cause me to vote against it, I'm just, yeah.
So, let's, let's go back to the, the thing that David brought up in forms of a leasing sign.
Yeah, do you, do you have a problem limiting the hours on a leasing sign? I don't even know why the leasing sign needs to be illuminated, frankly, because business hours are during the day, usually. I mean, there's probably a couple hours of the year during the winter solstice, when you would even need it to be lit, but...
Sure, yeah, so, John Moss with Prometheus, and in terms of the, the leasing signage, if it's limited to just the sign that says leasing on it, certainly it can be limited to the hours of operation. If it's the sign that has the identification of the name of the property, we would like to have that lit, and it'll be on that.
Understood, yeah, thanks, perfect.
Could you introduce your team, because you're new to us, right? We've come a long way with one, one person group, and you're new, and I'd personally like to know your team.
Sure, so, I'm John Moss with Prometheus, and the rest of the folks we have here with Prometheus as well, Jonathan Stone, who's got the blue suit on, and Peter Nguyen is back here as well. So, it's the three of us, we're all from Prometheus, we work closely with Jess Couch, and also with Jeff Byrd, and they remain partners in the project with us, so we are developing it actually alongside them. We're just the majority owner at this stage of the game.
Okay. Thank you.
I mean, is there anything other than limiting them to monument signs that you think might improve things?
For signage? No.
No? Okay.
No. I just would rather see a monument sign than a, I can't think of any residential area, any residential project within San Carlos that actually has sort of a building monumented sign, and especially that big, and, and, you know, I just think that that's setting a precedent for others, whereas almost every project has a monument sign.
I'm okay supporting that, I would support that.
Okay.
I don't know how the others feel, but I am, because, you know, I can think of places where you drive down the road, and you see sign on the building, sign on the building, sign on the building, and I just don't want that, that really to happen, I'd rather have monuments. I mean, it's, it's not enough for me to not approve it, but I would definitely support.
And I can live with illuminated for a monument sign, as opposed to one that's sort of on the side of a building, that's 15 to 25 feet up in the air.
So, the application is for the option of two different versions, so are you, what, are you saying that you, you have a problem with one version?
I have a problem with one version, yes. I would prefer to limit them to the monument sign. What the shape of that sign is, you know, I think we can give them a little bit more leeway in that, but I, for me, the, the sign that's on the side of the building, I have a, a problem with that.
Can you go over the location one more time, Colette, of those signs? Your, your one page, your one page...
Are you talking about where it would be located on the building?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, it would, it would be mounted above the first floor, so, again, we want to make sure we have a clearance, we're not having people, or if there happens to be equipment that needs to come in. So, it would be a 10-foot sign, starting 12 feet, 14 feet above grade, depending.
So, between, I mean, I'm talking about the actual location, and when you started the presentation, you said exactly where the locations were going to be.
Okay, it's on the corner, there's, buildings one, two, and three, so it's on the corner of building three, three and four, and then it would be on the, so on the bottom row of buildings, it's at the corner of building three, and then it would be at the southwest corner of building six.
So, we're not, I mean, it's not, we're not talking every building, which is, I think, the...
No, I understand. I mean, I'm, I'm a little surprised they want to put a big illuminated sign right where somebody's, there's an apartment there, somebody's going to live right there, okay? It's going to be outside somebody's window. It's also going to be seen by the residents of the individuals who live across the street up on that hill, in behind all of those businesses there. Whereas a monument sign is going to be low enough to the ground that nobody's really going to see it, and it's going to be near their leasing office.
There are big illuminated signs on like every single building, I'm like, I'm looking around San Carlos on Google Maps, I mean, there are big illuminated signs on like every single building. I mean, I...
Are they residential?
Well, technically, yeah.
I mean, I don't, you know, I'm looking at the dermatology skincare sign on the building across from 101 Laurel, because I thought there was a, a big sign on 101 Laurel. It's actually not that big, I mean, it looks like it's maybe five by five, but it's an illuminated sign, I just...
It's not an illuminated sign up on the side of the building. I, I'm conceding the illuminated sign for a monument sign. The issue is now, an illuminated sign 15, 14 to 25 feet in the air.
And you were smart, I mean, you, you recognized that I would, I would mention the Carlos Club sign if you didn't, if you didn't, if you didn't mention it yourself, but, well, here's the San Carlos Inn sign, that's, I'm probably historic, but ugly is all get out on the side of the San Carlos Inn. I mean, I could probably go up and down El Camino and find...
But you're finding business signs, rather than residential signs.
Okay, well, if you've got Shannon, you've got two votes, we, even if I've got...
Again, through the chair, the design review application did show a sign mounted on the building wall, was flush-mounted, not projecting, at the second-story level.
And what if we do that? What if we limit it to flush-mounted and/or monument? How about that? Look at Travelin' Motel, oh my God, that thing is ugly.
I'm just, I'm just saying that, that there was always sign contemplated for these two buildings and shown in the design permit.
Because it looked to me like it was sticking out.
No, the intention is, it is a projecting sign, it's not flush-mounted to the building, which is what was shown in the design review.
So, you're changing that, do that, does it...
I am, I'm just saying that there was a flush-mounted sign at the second story that was part of the design review. We didn't specifically approve it, we acknowledged there'd be signs. What they are showing is a projecting sign, I'm noting that it's different, but it's in an elevated location.
I will admit, I have more of a... I will admit, I have more of a problem with the projected sign. Well, if we're going to do it, let's limit it to something that's flush or a monument. Okay. I can live with that. All right. Let's talk about dirt haul. So just a couple of questions about the grading. I know that there have been some issues on that site with dust and things that were dumped on the property from the sewer project. So how do we guarantee that we're not going to, as part of the grading, create more dust into the neighborhood? And in particular, I'm looking at condition number 25 of the draft grading and dirt haul And then it just seems inconsistent to me that essentially you're going to prevent any dust from becoming a nuisance on any adjoining property, yet the requirement is to water the area twice a day. And so that just seemed to me like the watering twice a day was pretty inadequate to prevent the dust from occurring.
One thing to cover it with...
Well, they're going to be grading. I mean, they're going to be having tractors out there, and they're, obviously, when you have tractors out there, you're going to be creating all kinds of dust. And so how do we build in here? Because I know that the residential area is going to take pictures, and I know that they're going to do whatever is necessary to make it really uncomfortable if there are problems that arise. So I would rather see us do something right now that prevents that from happening.
So what do you propose?
I...
Three times a day?
I don't know how often it needs to be done. I'm not a soil expert.
From our previous developments that we've approved in grading permits and dirt hauling, I would imagine this is the normal criteria for dust mitigation management, right?
It is. And in looking at condition number 25, it doesn't say twice a day. It says, "Shall be wetted, protected, or contained to avoid nuisance." And again, if it's not a windy day, and it's rained recently and so forth, you wouldn't need to be out there wetting. If it's August, and it's nice, warm weather, and there's a breeze, then the wetting would need to be more, you would need to have it be more frequent. And that's one of the reasons we have inspection from Public Works staff to look at that. I've been working on a project in another community, and the water trucks have been on the site continuously. I mean, basically, as areas are graded and new soil, particularly because of the drought, because the area, the ground isn't particularly wet, they've been basically almost following the grading equipment to make sure that the particulates are wetted down and that they're not blowing. The assurance is that the Public Works staff inspect grading operations, foundations, preparations, and all of those sorts of things.
Okay. So somewhere we have as a standard message that...
I believe it's in one of the conditions, one of the mitigation measures, which identifies at least twice a day.
At least twice a day, yes.
But specifically, condition 25 says it has to be done in a manner to prevent any nuisance from dust. So again, it would vary.
Okay. And how often is an inspector going to be out there keeping an eye on it?
I would depend on what activity is going on. So, you know, I can't say there's going to be somebody there every hour. It would depend on what the activity is they're doing, in particular, if once they, again, stepping back and just saying, having done this for a long time, when there's a contractor on site, tend to watch him real close the first little while to see who he is and what he is, the general. And if they're running a clean, well-managed site, and you back off, and you're not there all the time, but you still are going by. But again, they would also need to be on-site for certain kinds of activities having to do with the placement of utilities, because those are things that the city has an interest in making sure they're done a certain way, in terms of slopes and cover and those sorts of things.
Okay. I think there's a tremendous sensitivity in that neighborhood to the creation of dust. And so absolutely everything that's possible needs to be done to make sure that dust is held to a minimum. Another thing that I noticed here is that in mitigation measure AQ 2.1C... It talks about "All visible mud or dirt tracked out onto adjacent public road shall be removed using wet power vacuum street sweepers at least once a day. The use of dry power sweeping is prohibited." Yet, on condition 13, it talks about "During grading, the applicant shall sweep public streets daily as often as necessary to keep streets free of visible soil material and to protect adjacent properties from dust to the satisfaction of the city engineer. Dry sweeping methods shall be used whenever, when possible, for cleaning sediments from the streets, driveways, etc." So those are totally inconsistent. One is talking about wet sweeping only, and the other is talking about dry sweeping. So can we fix that?
We can fix that. Again, if you read that, basically, as we've been moving forward on clean water, if you're sweeping with wet water, a wet method, you're then sweeping particulates into the drainage system. So from between when the EIR was done and as we've moved forward, there is a preference. The other thing is that the 300 cubic yards of material that's being imported is basically, they put a rock bed right by the main entrance where they're coming in and out, so that the trucks are, they're agitated to get particulates and the mud off. So the first goal is to not have it out on the streets at all. But yes, I can sit down and look at some revised wording.
Okay. In particular, because, again, the neighborhood over there is very sensitive from the sewer project that's been going on over there, and in particularly along industrial road, there's been a really poor job done of the sweeping at that project. And so there's a lot of soil that's been tracked into the neighborhoods, and at the end of the day, it has not looked clean. It still looks like there's a lot of soil there. So again, there's a sensitivity to the sweeping in that particular area.
So I'll sit and look at the two words and see how to revise 13, since it's not a mitigation measure.
One more question. What happens if the trucks use Holly?
Use what?
Use Holly Street.
If you notice, there's a condition that if they're not in compliance with the conditions, the job site can be shut down. That's basically the hammer that the city has, is that if they don't comply with the conditions, that they grade in a manner that's not consistent with their approval, the job site can be shut down.
Okay. I just wanted to make that perfectly clear, because just because the city says something doesn't necessarily mean it's going to get done.
And just to point out, there's also a condition, because, again, there are subcontractors and stuff happens, that there is a, you know, the city, just like the police department, relies on the community for eyes and ears. So there is a requirement to post the site with someone's, with information about how to contact someone with a complaint, as well as the city. So...
So that's why I was saying, what happens if the trucks go down Holly Street?
We would expect that we would hear about it, and then, you know, we have a conversation with the...
I'm going to guess you are going to hear about it.
And then have a conversation with them and have it be reiterated to all the folks. And again, if they're cavalier about it and don't take it seriously, and it's an ongoing problem, then the tool that the city has is to shut down the job site until the problems are addressed.
Okay. Because I know the shuttles actually have GPS on them now, so that they can tell whether they're going down the residential streets or not.
Oh, you mean, so they can be tracked?
So they can be tracked, yes, because they kept going down the streets even long afterwards. So they actually have GPS and have been caught multiple times.
Okay. On number 14, it's talking about the hours of operation. Does municipal code 12.8.160, does that specify the days of the week, or is this, are we allowing, or is this saying we're allowing dirt and grading, I mean, grading activities seven days a week?
Let me check that. I just wanted to note that there was a limitation for grading and hours, and there's a different limitation for dirt haul. And the dirt haul is restricted as to days. But let me check the section, whether it also has a days of the week.
Yeah.
For the grading?
Correct.
Yeah.
There is, there are restrictions by day also for dirt haul, but I don't believe there were for grading on the property. But we can look at that, and again, it is something that you're setting conditions for the grading permit, so, or grading certificate.
I mean, I'm just thinking of the disruption to the community, and I mean, we have a pretty standard...
Yeah.
14 is the one that I circled as well. The time, even the time, is probably not the smartest time to be hauling dirt.
Well, the dirt hauling only occurs between 9:00 and 4:00. So that's...
Right, this is a grading, okay.
Yeah.
But do we want to allow this seven days a week, or would we stand...
I'm going to check the code real quick and see what...
Because we've been putting tighter restrictions on other projects and...
Yeah, but it's mostly been about construction hours so that people wouldn't be disrupted. I mean, where they're going to be hauling the dirt. I mean, it might be better for them to be hauling during the weekend when there's less traffic.
When everybody's home.
And?
Just thinking of the noise, backhoes and...
If they're going to be grading, you know, at 8:30 or 8 o'clock in the morning...
I thought we were talking about the hauling.
Yeah, we're talking about two different things.
The hauling's limited. The hauling is limited only to, it's the grading that isn't limited. So the hauling's limited to 9:00 to 4:00, Monday through Friday. The grading can be 8:00 to 5:30, five days a week.
No, it doesn't say five days a week.
It doesn't say that it isn't five days a week, though.
It just says 8:00 to 5:30. That's what I was asking the question, is do we want, do we allow this seven days a week, or are we going to put restriction on that?
And typically, you're allowed to do construction on Saturday and Sunday, but your hours are a little bit shrunken in the morning.
Yeah, I think we should consider abbreviated hours on the weekend to give the community rest. I think seven days nonstop. I know we want to get it done, but I don't, I think that's a big, I think that's a big disruption, and we ought to consider starting at 10:00 or something like that on a Saturday, and maybe not on Sunday. I'm just throwing that out there.
I don't have a problem with that. I don't have a problem with that either.
Especially since you're going to be dealing with Wheeler Plaza, you're going to be dealing with the Transit Village, you're going to be dealing with the hotel, you're going to be dealing with the Honda dealership, you're going to be dealing with Orchard Supply Hardware. So you've got five large projects all going on at the same time.
Yeah. I think we need to give the community some weekend rest.
I'm fine with that.
So 10:00 to 5:00 on Saturday, and then not on Sunday?
That's fine. Anything else that comes up?
So 10:00 to 5:00 on Saturday for grading?
Anything else? Scott?
No, I was kind of waiting for the wording...
Oh, well, I can address the other question. I think one of the differences between the two of these is, one, the one that's in the air quality is a power vacuum. So it's not like you're out there hosing down the street to deal with sediments. You actually have special equipment that both waters and sucks the water back up. So, and it doesn't permit the use of dry power sweeping, which is sweeping in...
Sweeping away instead of sucking it up.
And drawing it up. So in terms of, so one of them is the power vacuum component combined with water is one of the things that is specified in the air quality one. So in here, under 13, you could say that if you want to revise it and say that wet power vacuum is the preferred method. And again, if they were just using water to flush the pavement, then it has to be detained in order to allow it to, for particulates to settle out. Otherwise, that's going into our drainage system. So that's why this condition, and this condition came from Public Works, who's very conscientiously trying to comply with the C3 requirements for stormwater and drainage.
Okay.
So the way it's worded, actually, there is no change?
Well, you could say that instead of dry sweeping methods, just take everything out after that and say that wet power vacuum...
Because the use of dry power sweeping is prohibited anyways, isn't it?
Well, that's in 13, or in AQ 2. But here, under 13, it says, "Dry sweeping methods shall be used where possible." And I was suggesting that you could strike that section and say that the preferred method is wet power vacuum, which is you're not having water running off.
Okay. Thank you.
And through the chair, staff can follow up on Commissioner Bergman's question regarding condition number 14 and the reference to municipal code section 1208160. Those hours are consistent with what's listed in the condition, which is 8:00 a.m. to 5:30 p.m., unless otherwise specified by the planning commission. So you can make modifications to those hours. Thank you.
Does the code say seven days a week?
It doesn't say days.
It doesn't say days.
You could log that in.
And since you guys are out there, are you planning on doing grading on Saturdays?
We would definitely like to have the flexibility to do so. We have not gone over the schedule with our subcontractor in that level of detail as far as whether or not they would need Saturdays or Sundays. We would certainly appreciate the flexibility to be able to do that.
Okay. Well, I think we were talking about no on Sunday and 10 to 5 on Saturday.
10 to 5 on Saturday and no on Sunday.
Yeah.
I really just think we, I think there's just too much for the community to absorb with all the other projects that are going to be going on. I mean, if I wouldn't personally want it, I don't want to inflict it on someone else.
Okay, dirt hauling, are we good? Anything else?
Want to put the motion back up?
What?
I was asking, staff want to put the motion back up? Is there any more discussion? Is there anything we're doing as far as the grading, other than modifying 14?
We're modifying 14, and we're modifying 13.
Really? I... I, can you explain that to me? I just like, this seems like, this seems like pretty technical to me. What's the?
In one place it says to use dry sweeping and in the other place, the mitigation measures, it says that you have to use wet sweeping.
And where do you see the wet sweeping?
The wet sweeping is in AQ2.1C, which was part of the mitigation measures that were put in place when the project was approved. And now we're.
AQ what?
AQ2.1C.
So through the chair, there'd be two changes. Condition number 13, the whole last section talking about dry sweeping methods would be struck and we would insert the wording that says, you can even reference this section, but would just say the use of wet power vacuum street sweeping is preferred or required.
Required.
Or required.
Required, not preferred.
And then in 14, it would say it shall occur only between the hours of 8:00 AM to 5:30 PM, Monday through Friday, 10:00 to 5:00 on Saturday and not on Sunday.
You see that, David?
Yeah.
One says dry sweeping is prohibited.
I see it, but like.
And then the other one says, well, you got to do, you got to do dry sweeping.
I know, I see it, I just, I want to assume that it was intentional and that.
I'm not saying it's intentional, I'm saying we need to correct it.
No, I'm saying, I assume that the folks who created these things had common sense in mind, I mean, had the science in mind and that there must be a reason why these two things appear inconsistent to us laypeople, but, okay.
To me, the dry sweeping is another opportunity to create dust.
What if we, what if we just modify 13 to say that it not be consistent with AQ2.1C? I just wonder, is there any chance these are different things? Is there any chance? You really think they're just inconsistent?
I just think they're inconsistent. I mean, it's essentially talking, it's air quality control of dust.
Yeah, again, the air quality one comes from, I believe that the EIR was prepared in, well, it was certified and, the project was approved in 2013. I believe that the EIR was prepared in like 2007, 2008. And since in the last eight years, we've moved with respect to the issues of protecting stormwater and that sort of thing. So that's why you have a condition that says you can't have runoff and those sorts of things.
It's so old, it's from 2007.
We're making a judgment.
Well, I'm just saying that's why they're not reconciled.
Gotcha. Because we have to put what was approved in the document.
It's inconsistent. If we're going to go with one, we, you know, I don't think we can modify the EIR, can we?
No. And again, that would appear to be, in terms of keeping dust down, is the superior method, which is, but the important thing is, is you don't just get to hose down the street and let the water carry the dirt off, it has to be power vacuumed. Otherwise, you then need to have ways for the water to be held out of the drainage system for the particulates to settle.
Good.
So that's why we're revising 13.
They're actually putting the barriers around all the storage drains anyway, so the water wouldn't go into the drainage system.
Well, it does go through the straw, but it does help to keep the particulates out of the drainage system. The straw things, water does go through it, but the goal it has is to keep sediment from going into the drainage system.
Okay.
Okay, I move that the planning commission approve the resolution approving the sign program for the six residential buildings in the San Carlos Transit Village mixed-use project and the resolution approving a grading and dirt haul approval certificate for the 6.26 acre San Carlos Transit Village mixed-use site with the four modifications. One that condition 13 in the dirt haul is modified to provide that it must be consistent with AQ2.1, all visible mud or dirt tracked out onto adjacent public roads shall be removed using power vacuum sweepers at least once per day. The use of dry power sweeping is prohibited. Anything inconsistent with 13 is written is stricken. 14 be modified to prohibit grading activities on Sundays and limit them in addition to the limitations currently existing to the hours of 10:00 AM and 5:00 PM on Saturdays, 8:00 and 5:30 on weekdays. In addition, the, with respect to the sign program, signs, sign D4 may only be illuminated during business hours. That would be the leasing sign. And if the developer chooses sign D2, that sign must be mounted to the building and may not project from the building.
Your second?
Second.
Can I get a roll call vote?
Commissioner Marsters?
Yes.
Commissioner Silverman?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bergman?
Yes.
And Chair Gutierrez?
Yes.
Okay, concludes that item. Thank you. Colette, hope to see you soon.
Whenever, whenever we do something having to do with the Transit Village and it ends, I just, I feel like it's time for me to just get up, you know? Like, the meeting has got to be over.
Yeah, drop the mic, right? Thank you.
That's what I was thinking, I was thinking drop the mic, but I didn't want to say that.
New business on-street dining pilot program on Laurel Street. And Laura, are you going to do a presentation on that one?
Yes.
Great.
Thank you and good evening. I'm Laura Russell with the Planning Division and I'll be giving the presentation this evening to introduce you to the on-street dining pilot program. In March of this year, the City Council adopted a strategic objective to consider a proposal to allow outdoor dining in public parking spaces on Laurel Street. So staff researched some best practices for sidewalk cafes and parklets and presented a proposed pilot program to the City Council. This program was approved by the Council in July of this year. The pilot program application process would be open to all restaurants in the 600, 700, and 800 blocks of Laurel Street. The dining area would be allowed in the parking spaces in front of the participating restaurants. So two restaurants will be selected to participate in the pilot program, which will run for 18 So the idea is to construct a curb extension out over the city street that would be flush with the sidewalk. So this is a similar design to parklets in San Francisco and numerous other big cities. Safety and design requirements are based on the best practices from those other programs in cities. So you've probably seen curb extensions over parallel parking spaces, but they are not as common with angled parking spaces like we have on Laurel Street. So here's a drawing with an example of how on-street dining can be done in angled parking spaces. Up to three parking spaces would be required to create the dining area. You can see here how the planters create the edge and the safety barrier around the dining area and it's set in a little bit from the adjacent parking spaces for safety and also to allow full use of those parking spaces. As I mentioned, each location would use up to three parking spaces, that would be the maximum, and two locations would be allowed during the pilot program. So up to six parking spaces in the downtown area could be used for this program. So this slide shows the numbers of the on-street parking spaces within the program area to give you some context. So in the 600 block, there are 51 spaces, 700 block, 63, and in the 800 block, there are 39 parking spaces. So here's an outline of the process that would be going through. First, the restaurants would be invited to apply, so we're going to do a call for projects process, kind of like an RFP process, and invite people to apply. And then a selection committee is being formed to choose two of those restaurants to participate. And the selection committee is going to include representatives from your planning commission, the Chamber of Commerce, the Economic Development Advisory Commission, Transportation and Circulation Commission, and from city staff. So I've been giving a similar presentation to those other groups and asking for volunteers. Then the restaurants would develop a more formal plans. Those would be submitted back to staff and planning commission would conduct the review of the final design and appearance of those. And basically, the underlying concept is we're using an outdoor dining permit, which currently the director has the authority to approve in a more standard configuration. So we're thinking of this as like an enhanced outdoor dining permit and then elevating it up to the planning commission's approval for the design of it. Once that's occurred, then they would apply for their building and encroachment permits to actually build it. So here's the selection criteria that was approved by the City Council. I'd like to point out a few of these in particular. So of course, they have to be willing to comply with the program. The second bullet, though, is compliance with municipal code requirements. So we will be reviewing the kind of history of the restaurants that participate and wish to participate in the program to make sure they're in compliance with the existing regulations. So we're going to make sure they have the right permits, make sure we don't have any open code enforcement actions, and we think this will be a good opportunity to encourage some of those people to abide by those regulations more strongly and even potentially change the layout of some of their existing tables and chairs to reduce the amount that the existing tables and chairs encroach into the sidewalk area.
You do realize that the first picture you showed shows a violation right from the beginning? We can go back to that.
A number of us have seen violations in downtown, certainly, certainly. We are hoping that a, an approach that is both, I would say, a carrot and a stick would be helpful in achieving that goal of getting stronger compliance. And then in terms of locations, the location would have to be in front of the associated restaurant. The program is written so that if two smaller restaurants wanted to go in together for immediately adjacent space and share an area, that could be allowed by the program.
That wouldn't allow them to have six spaces. That would allow them to have three spaces that they share.
Correct.
Okay.
And then there is another locational restriction to reduce any possibility of overconcentration or reduce the possibility of parking impacts. And that is to say that the program is limited to one on each side of the street on each block. So we don't know how these might be distributed throughout town, but we didn't want, for example, two on the east side of the 800 block and create any potential overconcentration. So that'll be one of the criteria that we'll look at. And then the last one is a commitment to implement measures to help offset the use of public parking. So this was added by the City Council in response to kind of interest and concerns about the availability of parking in the downtown area. So what the City Council requested is that the restaurant owners kind of come with proposals to implement measures to help offset that. So similar to kind of the TDM measures that you review for development projects, we're going to expect them to do some minor kind of little measures like that, parking transit passes, something like that for their employees. So in regards to the design, the program requires that the platform, the railings and the planters, so kind of those larger elements of it, would need to complement the existing downtown infrastructure. So not necessarily match, but have a similar look as the infrastructure of downtown, so the committee would be looking at that. And then the individual restaurants could use the tables, chairs, and accessories to match their brand and their appearance. And again, the final design would be subject to your planning commission approval. And of course, the current code requirements would also apply. There's good language in the code about the quality of the materials. So related to safety, we would expect the safety barrier would likely be a concrete planter or other very similar robust structure. The engineering staff, of course, will be working with us in the review of those. And then most places have secondary safety elements that include wheel stops, soft hip posts, and reflective elements to help drivers just be more aware of it and have another kind of layer of protection. So we've also compiled some best practices related to liability, insurance, and repair of the street at the end of the pilot program. Maintenance and operations of the dining areas would be the responsibility of the restaurant. So we'd be applying conditions of approval related to cleanliness, landscape maintenance, operations, compliance with the health department, ABC, ADA, lots of things like that to make sure that they're all in compliance, so similar to the conditions you apply to development projects. So at the end of the 18-month pilot program, the City Council could decide to continue the program, to alter it, or to end the on-street dining program. If they did permanently end, then the parking spaces would revert back to parking and the restaurants would be required to remove the platform and repair any damage that may have occurred in the course of the program. We would expect that evaluation to include a number of things that you can kind of imagine how, if it continues, how might we address overconcentration if the program is very successful? How might we address parking? Some cities charge for the use of public parking spaces, other cities do not. Cities have slightly different procedures for kind of like waiting lists or calls for projects. So a number of those things would be evaluated at that time, depending on the findings and how the program works out.
So who, who will determine the success criteria? How is that going to be determined? What, what would make a successful pilot project? Who determines that? How's that determined?
Staff will put together a number of criteria for the City Council to consider and kind of present the findings along with that criteria, but it would be the City Council's criteria that will ultimately decide whether to continue it. But we'll present it based on the best practices and research. So this evening, we're asking for a commissioner to serve on the selection committee that will choose the two restaurants to participate. We anticipate holding one to two meetings. We think that will be in late January. We would work with everyone on the schedules to find a time that's appropriate for everyone. And it would be kind of as you would expect. Staff will analyze those and present them to the selection committee with, you know, the criteria and some information for you to review. So we would appreciate the participation of one of the planning commissioners.
I'd volunteer to do it if there are no other people beating down the door.
I mean, I'd do it as well, but if you, if you want to do it more than me, I do, I do, I do, I do know two of the restaurant owners on the 700 block who are across the street from each other, so I don't know whether that is, that I don't do it or not.
I probably know all of them, so I'm going to probably recuse myself from that.
And I'm perfectly happy with you doing it. Here we go.
And then I'd also be happy to answer any questions that you have about the program or take any other comments that you have. The phase that we're at right now is we're finishing up the call for projects that we'll be sending out to the restaurants. And so we'll be sending that out. It looks like we're going to be on schedule to send it next week with those responses due back in mid-January after the holidays. So that's the approximate timing that we're at right now.
Thank you so much. You have some comments.
I just want to comment, why didn't they wait till after Wheeler Plaza? I mean, it seems like, it seems like what a great idea, but like, okay, we're going to take away one-third of the parking in San Carlos and hey, at the same time, let's try a pilot project removing another bunch of spaces.
Yeah.
There was actually considerable discussion about that at City Council.
Which I'm assuming is where the TDM stuff came from. And hopefully, hopefully, they would not accept a kiosk at Town Restaurant in exchange for parking.
It's okay to laugh, Lisa, I mean. No kiosk on this one.
So there was certainly quite a bit of discussion around that. So as part of that, there was discussion about what's going to happen related to parking with Wheeler Plaza. And so I think where it landed is, that's where a very strict restriction of the six parking spaces also came into play. So three maximum also came out of that discussion.
But that's why they get the big bucks, right? So.
Great, thank you very much.
So I have a couple of comments.
Okay.
So the first one is, have we ever asked the restaurants if they'd pay to move some of the sign poles? There, there's invariably in front of every single restaurant, there's a sign pole that's put in such a place that it forces the restaurant to be out of compliance. If you walk downtown, there isn't a single restaurant that really is in compliance. And a lot of that has to do with the sign poles. So if we could get, if we could offer them the opportunity to pay to move that sign pole so that they would be in compliance, that would be great. Okay? The same thing for umbrellas and overhangs. The same thing for umbrellas and overhangs. The first one that you showed there, the overhang is, you know, six feet from the ground and.
Scott, I don't know if this was, I'm just, you're dancing on the edge of the brown act, I think.
I'm just giving staff suggestions.
Okay.
Do you want, they asked for comments.
I know, on the, the, using parking spaces for.
But they have to be in compliance.
Okay.
Okay, so umbrellas, if we can look at, the first umbrella you showed looked perfect. We don't have any kind of umbrella that looks like that in the downtown. Would be nice if we could encourage restaurants to move to umbrellas that sit up against the wall, come up, and then go over rather than sit in the middle of the walkway. I'm, one of the things that, about the, the parking spaces is, we're trading a few TDM for parking spaces. Well, a typical, typical parking space costs about $40,000. So we're looking at maybe $120,000 that we're giving up for three people to potentially take transit. I'm not sure that's a fair deal for the city. It would be more of a fair deal if they were to provide some parking somewhere else. Or one option is to look at restaurants that might have additional parking that they could volunteer. I don't know if that's available or not. Okay? Just ideas to look at.
Did this come up through the community, isn't it? This, this, this idea, was it something that was brought to the City Council by the community? How did it, how did it originate?
There was discussion about it during the code update process. So it was pretty detailed. There was an entire meeting and a presentation and pretty detailed discussion about it at the time. So it was decided at that time not to pursue it. And then it came back through the community to the City Council and the City Council asked staff to revisit the topic.
Thank you.
Any more comments, Scott?
Nope.
Do we need to do a vote in order to choose Shannon? Or does it just kind of happen?
I don't think that's necessary. You can just, you know, nominate someone.
All right. I nominate Shannon.
I accept, thank you.
Great, thank you, Laura. Reports on recent, recent City Council actions, besides the one that was just presented?
None this evening.
Planning commission comments or reports?
Nothing, I'm sorry, just going back to the last one. There was an appeal that, has that not happened yet?
Oh, yes. Well, yeah, there was an appeal for the 545 Walnut Street project and that'll be taken to the City Council January 11th.
Okay, for some reason, I thought it might have already happened. Okay.
No, there is a requirement that appeals be taken forward in a certain timeframe unless they're agreed to by the applicant and the appellant. Because of scheduling, due to the holidays, we felt it was more appropriate to push that out to January 11th. So that one, that is when that matter will go before the City Council.
Okay. As far as planning, commission comments or reports, if there's a meeting on January the 4th, I will not be here.
And that's gonna be part of item D. So if we're on to that.
Yep.
There was no further correspondence this evening. So that, as you, most of you have, are aware, I think I announced this at the last planning commission hearing, the regular meeting of December 24th, 1st has been canceled, as will the regular meeting of January 4th, given that that is the first day back from the furlough. And if we put anything on the agenda, we're not here to answer questions, so we think it's just better to cancel that one, cancel that meeting as well. So we will return in this room on Tuesday, January, January 19th, and it's a Tuesday due to the Martin Luther King Jr. holiday. And on January 19th, we foresee the following two projects. The first, which will be a review of the San Carlos Transit Center, or otherwise, the parking lot area and design. The other piece, that was conditioned to be brought back to the planning commission for review. And then we will likely see the proposed subdivision at 2811 San Carlos Avenue, located on the, otherwise known as the house site. So those are two projects we'll be coming back at the beginning of the next year with.
Great. Meeting adjourned.
Thanks for volunteering, Shannon. Huh? Said thank you for volunteering.
If you didn't want to do it, we could.
You have a baby here?
We could have nominated Angela while she wasn't here. That's frequently what we do at Lions Club meetings. Nominate the individual not present.